The main arena, the main hall. Right on the left. How are you?
Good thanks.
Zip code upstairs?
No, this is the hall.
So do we have to put, can I put my jacket here or it's cold?
Sure, sure. If you want to, yeah, you can hang it here, but yeah, if you want to hang your jacket, you can grab it.
Or I can just drop it upstairs, on my seat, okay?
Yeah. Ow! This jacket is like forty, at least ninety-two degrees.
Now you know.
Running top ten.
So what are we doing? We are waiting for...
We're waiting to get inside then.
So we have Professor Zalenda.
Just speaking up.
Making a speech. Um, so we would like to connect, um...
I think we should just leave it.
Oh, leave it?
I think it's good the way it is.
Okay.
You look so happy.
I am. Well rested.
Is Zeykani Kanajai?
Yes. Taking back...
Talk to our people.
Taking back action. We are taking back Nigeria. If you don't believe it, you better start believing now. We are taking back Nigeria for sure.
Yes.
You know, we respect Bouhari is a good guy. Or it's time for him to retire. So we're gonna give him a befitting retirement.
And not only Bouhari, because there's other ones, you know...
Anatiku, we have, we have to persecute Anatiku. For sure, we have to persecute him. You know, so... Get your PVC, you know, we're working harder in diaspora to raise funds, to send back home. You know, so that you guys can buy posters and all that. But with all that said, get your PVC, believe in AAC, this is gonna happen. Thank you.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Seven people?
But some people are supposed to be, you know, respecting more head counts. Maybe the snow was just an obstacle, probably.
It's snow ahead today, yeah?
Yeah, so, um...
They're like, they're like Shoré, any tiny snow.
I'm walking around everywhere with snow.
It's actually a blessing, because, you know, it hasn't, it hasn't snowed in a long time.
Wow.
It hasn't snowed in a long time and here it is, so...
White Christmas, everybody thinks they're gonna have white Christmas.
Yeah, white Christmas, so, but I, I, I wish we don't.
Come on.
That's my honest opinion. I wish we don't. I want this, it looks like this winter is gonna be one of those, uh, we'll have less snow, but more cold.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's like thirty, something, thirty degrees in Texas, you know, we are all in trouble.
Are you serious?
Yes.
How are you?
Very good.
Oh, yes, glad to meet you.
Glad to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
No problem. I came here from Nigeria yesterday. I had to be here today. It's been a lot of travel, but it's been good too.
We're looking for speech.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm looking forward to it too.
So you wanna talk to our people?
Thank you for what you do and it's good to, uh, to stay motivated and, uh...
Thank you.
Come on.
This is only fun, I think, making communications.
No, I just wanted to...
Alright, thank you so much.
Had a chance to listen to what you have to say, so it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, thank you.
Mrs. Kanajai, right?
Yes.
How are you?
I just, I just had a very good guest.
How are you doing?
Very good, very good.
The prettiest woman in Nigeria.
Nice to meet you. Do you all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you are so kind. Oh, you wanna say something?
No, no, it's okay, it's okay. Hey! For your affairs, take it back.
Action.
We're bringing it home, we're bringing it home.
Oh man, it's a lot of work.
Mr. Jan?
To do London last weekend.
Let me, let me do it.
Clement, what are you wearing?
Anything I wanna wear.
I'll keep my present, I'll give the essence of the sacred services.
So, have you been to Minnesota before?
Yes, I have.
Why?
I thought this was where we passed when we were going to Edmonton.
Edmonton, okay.
Yeah.
St. Paul?
No.
Are you sure?
This was, uh, this was, this was a transit point.
I always go through here, it's always...
But there was, there was a time I came here years ago, I was giving a talk in a place called Marshall.
Marshall, okay, yeah, yeah.
I drove three hours.
Yeah, it is.
It was the first time I found out that America is not one single country.
No.
Because what they were saying on their radio shows...
Yeah.
These different...
It's really whack.
Yeah, yeah, usually, and this goes across every state, city, major cities, so the inner cities is what, you know, the, the, the media always likes to show, so, but once you go beyond the inner city...
There's something else.
It is just, you know, like my first time ever going beyond the inner city, going down a country. I was like, my goodness, this looks like my village.
How are you, man?
How are you? We are praying for you.
Thank you, thank you.
You get this.
Thank you.
In Jesus' name.
Thank you.
You are welcome, we are native.
We was, uh, my people.
The person who have been here since five, something.
It helps me to ransom, they can help me.
I like...
They organize us. I guess we're waiting for more participants, that's what caused it. No, no problem, man.
Mommy, you want to say something to our viewers?
Ah, hey, Nigeria, it's about time.
Yes.
To take it back.
That's right.
And by God's grace, we take our country back.
Yes.
From the analog...
People.
People.
Yes.
And God will help us.
Amen.
So we are not alone. God has sat on it.
Yes.
And he shall be so in Jesus' name.
Alright.
Okay.
I'm gonna put my prayer request here.
Oh, put it back. It has been sat on, put it here, take it back, we are taking our country back. Take it back, swear.
Oh yeah, um... The company was rapping is for dancing.
That's for funding.
So everything here is all good. So five minutes. Yes. I'll take a good one too.
Sorry, yes. Okay, you got, you got the job. So lead them, so...
Iron Lady already knows the job, so...
Stop calling me Iron Lady.
And I introduce it.
Very good, three nice ones.
Okay. See what I mean? Take it back. You really wanna take it back?
So that they call it Twin Cities?
Yeah.
Cause the two biggest cities, they're just facing each other.
Okay. It was divided by earlier.
Yeah, yeah, so if you go to places like, uh, the northern side of St. Paul, go to one of those towers...
Yes.
You can, you can literally see the two cities looking at each other. That's why they call it Twin Cities.
Hey, we showed up.
They're just fifty minutes away from each other.
Yes, man. That's interesting.
Yeah. So yeah, like I was saying, once you go beyond that inner city...
Oh yeah.
Which is where you have all the, you know, skyscraper building, once you go beyond that and the suburbs.
The moment you go beyond the concrete jungles.
The rest is just farms and, you know, country.
I drove, I rented a car, drove to Marshall for three hours.
Fumila, you are in today, Minneapolis, where are you guys?
Uh, we're right here, we're right here by Lake Street in Minneapolis. You know, the best place to be at this time, cause, cause...
I think she's asking for address.
Oh, what's the address?
Oh, the address is eight-ten, eight-one-zero...
You're right.
Eight-one-zero West Thirty-first Street?
It has a name, Regent's...
Regent Assembly.
Assembly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The church... Oh, I thought it was like a name.
Regent's Assembly, Regent's Assembly.
West Thirty-first Street, Minneapolis?
Thirty-first Street, yes.
Minneapolis?
Yes, Minneapolis. I think, um...
Uh, zip code please.
Zip code would be, give me a moment, I don't have that, I've had... I'll just get you that real quick.
What's it called, Regent's Assembly?
This place is a lot of APC supporters.
In, in Minneapolis?
Exactly, you know, exactly, some those rhythm guys.
Alright.
They so support and...
Okay, we got some...
Usually when you map it...
No.
Usually when you map it, it will automatically append a zip code to the address, so...
They will, if you just have the address, they will find the zip.
Yeah, it will find the zip.
Are we good?
Thank you, man.
How are you?
No, 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 no.
So...
No, no. Waiting for change.
Yeah.
Change of day. So the zip code is five-five-four-zero-eight?
I don't think it's a link, I mean...
Yeah, it doesn't, the address, the street address is one matter, so the rest would just...
Where did he go?
He's in there.
God damn it.
Code?
One, sacrifice.
This one.
We are not going to be able to develop Nigeria, there is no sacrifice. Sometimes I feel terribly, I feel concerned, I feel vulnerable because I'm here for a very long time and I wish I could make some changes, or there are makes of contribution. So, to conclude, I'll just say that sacrifice is very, very important. If we're not willing to try and sacrifice, nobody's going to change Nigeria. Clearly, nobody's going to change Nigeria. And then finally, I would say, I would just conclude by saying that, um... Intellectually, I'm very pessimistic, but I'm optimistic in my heart. I, I have some optimism in my heart. But if you look at it intellectually, you know what is happening in Nigeria sometimes, it is very, very pessimistic. Because the people who are the very most obvious who want to make a difference in our country, seriously, I would... My goal is that, through social movement, such as the one that is taking place here, we can do something. We can come together and forget about our differences, or we, let's forget, let's forget, because we recognize our differences, but find common ground, establish common ground. I would tell them if I, if I had a dream and I cheated anyone, I would tell them because you are evil, you are bad, you're somebody, you're strict. So, listening very deeply, I mean, just think about the legacy we're going to leave behind for the younger generation. I don't think I'll be satisfied just coming to live here in the United States and just kind of having a job and need, and retire and just keep suffering in Nigeria. Even though, even in the US, you have to be very careful, because social security is no... Okay, thank you very much. Well, let's give Professor Wazamanga another round of applause. Thank you so much, Professor, for your wisdom and understanding, you know, may God continue to strengthen you. You are a blessing to us, you know, a blessing to Nigeria. And the next item on the agenda is, uh, to bring in our convener. Omoyele Shoré is here with us tonight, and I want to give a brief introduction of Omoyele Shoré. Omoyele is a Nigerian human rights activist and pro-democracy campaigner, founder of Sahar Reporters, you know, we are all familiar with Sahar Reporters, that's Shoré's name. Humble founder of Sahar Reporters. And is also a presidential candidate, you know, for African Action Congress in Nigeria. You know, he is the single threat, you know, to President Bouhari and Anatiku in this upcoming election. The wonderful man is behind us here, that is who I call Mr. Omoyele Shoré. AAC?
AAC?
Take it back.
Take it back?
Action.
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 Now the guys, AAC?
Take it back.
Take it back?
Action.
AAC?
Take it back.
Take it back?
Action.
AAC?
Take it back.
Take it back?
Action.
AAC?
Take it back.
How are you, man?
No, it's A-A-C, who knows what that stands for? Thank you.
Oh, what a wise woman.
Thank you. African Action Congress. We got the Iron Lady in the house. African Action Congress. I would like to go deeper, but I won't. Some people were asking questions like, what does African action has to do with Nigeria? Because they didn't think... That the man had a death cult to him, but he didn't. I don't know the whole story, but I've heard it many times, so I'm not gonna tell the story, I'm gonna let the convener tell the story. But I just wanna do, do justice, if I may. May I? May I? First of all, good evening, everybody. I, uh, I'm gonna keep it short, because we wanna get right to the point. Thank you for coming, your time is precious. We don't take it for granted. I surely hope we don't, because if you're here, it means you're conscious and you have faith. And faith, if you believe in, eleven eleven says, "There's a substance of things hoped for, evidence of things..."
Not seen.
"...yet to be seen." I truly believe that. And I don't wanna be dramatic, but allow me to tell you that there's history in the making. And if you don't believe it, I believe it because you're here. And you know what else I believe in? I believe in a man of integrity. If you know what integrity looks like, it's that person that... That you can trust with your life, your children's life. And that's who Shoré is. At least from the people I've gotten to know in a very short time, like Kanakala Jai. He's always very shy, but he's a giant Akala. I've gotten to know him very soon. Then there's Dejia Komalafe, well-respected, well-respectable people in the communities. The story of Abadetsi likes to tell, I'm gonna steal it from him. He was my mentor, he was the first person I met when I came from Kenya. And I heard that this man was gonna put his life on the line, what he's been doing for thirty good years. And I say thirty good years. And then, Abadetsi will tell the story that if it wasn't for him, he would be a millionaire. If it wasn't for the course that they had together that changed his ways. So, without further ado, I'm thanking you guys for being here to welcome him. The man that can actually do something for us. And I took, I believe a wise man says, "When duty calls, oh, they must let the young man say, 'Yes, I can.'" And that's what I've seen with this man. We did some amazing things in Sokala and Norkala, but Omoyele Shoré is the one to help us go back home. I wanna go back home. I heard someone said, "Me too." I want people to go back home. I have three kids and I sometimes wonder, sometimes the gibberish of things, the jargon, so I don't wanna go into that. The jettisons, the, the things that makes us hurt. So I believe in this man tonight. There's so many things. Did I touch somebody's heart? It means in English... "Owa, owokele kobo." My dad used to say, "There's no way you can translate sometime, you're writing to correct English grammatically." Well, "Owokele kobo," that means, there's a million tales. Am I, am I close?
Yeah.
A million tales in one, in one, in a book of kabbos. What is kabbos in English? A penny?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanna make sure I get it right, because I see a lot of intelligent people here. So without further ado... When I think about that... The only thing I remember is that there's something wrong with us, but Shoré would say, whatever is wrong with us, it's about to be right with us. I would like to introduce the convener of AAC, African National Congress, because it's not just about Nigeria, it's about our heritage. And he's here, and he's got more to be said that will bring us to the understanding that... This can happen and will happen. But he can't do it alone. He can't do it alone. Please help me welcome with a greater promise, Omoyele Shoré.
Thank you so much, Clement, and leading to everyone here, present. Let me apologize for coming late. It had nothing to do with me, it had something to do with organizers, so kidnapped me, kept me somewhere, because I have no sense of time right now. I, last weekend, was in the United Kingdom, and I had to fly to Nigeria, and flew from Nigeria to the US yesterday morning. And by today, I'm here with you in Minneapolis for one reason and one reason only, so that Nigeria can get it right. It's, uh, the most important year in our life, it will be next year, the life of Nigeria, that's twenty nineteen. It's important, because it'll be twenty years since the advent of the current democratic experiment in Nigeria. It was in nineteen ninety-nine that Nigeria returned to democratic rule, what is known as a fourth republic. Since then, we've had several presidents democratically elected, or sometimes selected, depending on which circle of election you are looking at. And we've had the same old people, same set of people, same set of families run Nigeria the way they like. And as a result, a lot of our people, a lot of our people have been left behind. And those who are not left behind, left Nigeria behind. And the ones that left Nigeria behind, that some of you that are sitting right here with us today. But interesting thing about Nigeria is that you can leave Nigeria behind, but Nigeria will never leave you alone. Wherever you run, Nigeria will find you. This is my experience traveling around the world, spreading the message of the recovery of Nigeria from those who have taken Nigeria by the jugular. And this message, by the way, has taken me to some of the most unlikely places in the world, and most unlikely places even within Nigeria. I mean, if a presidential aspiration or candidacy takes you to Australia, then you know that you are serious. I've been recently to four cities in Australia, Brisbane, Melbourne, Sydney, and Perth, to talk to Nigerians who left Nigeria behind, but who are finding it very hard to let Nigeria go, or those who Nigeria have refused to let go. I'm saying this, you know, these words are repeating themselves, letting Nigeria, leaving Nigeria behind, and Nigeria are not letting you go. Because you know that there's no how far, how wild, or how, you know, how you hide. Somehow, the problems that you left behind must find you in the diaspora. And like most of you, I have spent some nineteen years here in the United States of America as well. And I'll tell you that even though it is nice out here, sometimes you can describe it as beautiful, there's just nothing like home. I have been going back to Nigeria frequently in the last three or four years and, you know, landing in Nigeria, even when you are approaching the airport, you know, can be very depressing, I'll tell you. When you see the brown roofs, when you see on plants, you know, swathe of land, you know, you see a whole city undering a plane that is not planned, there are no roads, no sewage. And when you land, you know the story too. But there's just something different about being home, you know, that is welcoming and that makes you feel good, even though it doesn't last for too long. But it's a different place. And what have I reminded of Nigeria today? Two, three days ago, there's no way I could be putting on this jacket. No way. Well, there are people wearing them, you know, actually, a lot of very passionate people in Nigeria. Winter jackets, I don't know how they do it, but I, I see people in Lagos who are like, wearing leather jackets, and I'm like, you know, I really respect them. You know, I have a lot of respect for people who are walking around Lagos, leather jackets, twenty-two degrees Celsius, that's like... It is something degrees that are fine eyes. But that's Nigeria, but it's a paradox of the country, and that's what makes Nigeria an interesting place, that you find most unlikely things with unlikely people. But if I ask most of you here, you would love to have a country you can go back to. Is that correct? You know, it's, it's my conclusion after spending nineteen years, that you know, there's a place for, you know, really travel, there's a place for even abandoning your citizenship, there's a place for seeing the farthest part of the world, there's a place for having fun, living in the nicest places, driving in the nicest cars. But there's also a place called home, and it doesn't matter where else you might be, home is just the best. You know, there's so many of those days, we used to have a literature book that has these words that say east or west. Home is the best. So that is what has been driving the messaging that you have heard from me in the last few months. And for those of you who have been following my travels, my speeches, my engagements and interactions with Nigerians all over the world, and it has nothing to do with Nigerians abroad. It has only to do, it has something to do with Nigerians inside of Nigeria. I have mentioned before, I have been to over 30 states out of the 36 states in Nigeria. And one of the things I realized traveling in Nigeria, uh, two major things is that most of the people governing Nigeria don't know the people of Nigeria. And they don't care about them. That's number one. And most of Nigeria, the country called Nigeria is not governed by anybody. That's true. The country is just there, is on autopilot. People are responsible for how the place is governed. Most communities, cities, villages, and towns are responsible for construction of their own buildings. They're responsible for the schools that the children go to. They're responsible for sanitation. They are responsible for, and their own security. In fact, a lot of houses, even in the cities, are local governments by themselves. Considering that you have to provide your own security, you have to provide your own water, you provide your own electricity. You provide school for your children, you are responsible for security, even on the streets. That's how Nigeria is. And there are no signs in my 30-state visits in Nigeria that people are even trying in governments to make life better for Nigerians. And there's no but, who know the stories, know that you do, those of you abroad. You see, you'll be surprised, the moment you get into Nigeria, you know less about Nigeria than when you are outside Nigeria. If you want to know the real happiness in Nigeria, just stay outside. The moment you walk into Nigeria, you will not get the news about Nigeria. Because Nigerians are deaf, they are too deaf to what is happening. You know, the situation of Nigeria has destroyed the air drums of Nigerians. Or a lot of people have become even up for science, because there's no certainty of any time that you can tell Nigeria that has not happened to them before. People are walking around dead people or stepping over there, it's not new. People are walking around, buildings collapsing around them, it's nothing new. People are going to schools without teachers, they still go there. Walkers are going to work without pay, they still go there every day. People go to hospitals, there are no doctors, they don't stop going to the hospitals. Hoping that doctors will want to show up in these hospitals. But it's not enough to tell you the story because you hear, as I often repeated to Nigerians abroad, we know what is happening because we are the social security department of Nigeria. We are the ones helping out. In fact, we made a finding recently, this was about last week with our team in Nigeria, that apart from oil, the biggest source of revenue into Nigeria is Nigeria, Nigeria diaspora. And it's about to surpass oil now because we are not selling oil at the rate we used to sell. But we are sending more people outside, so the more people leave the country, the more money we get in terms of revenue from the diaspora. And we have a robust and amazing diaspora community all over the world. And I've been to a few of these places. I've been to Italy, I've been to Spain, Australia, I've been to UK twice, I've been to South Africa. Of course, I've been to several cities in the US. And what is interesting about us is that we are the ones that has become the life wire of a lot of communities where we live around the world. There was a place we went to in Australia, and the people there, I think it was in Perth, kept saying that if they have not seen a Nigerian doctor, they don't trust that they will get the best form of treatments. That is in Australia. Nigerian doctors performing wonders. One woman told me that, "Oh, I'm not going to hospital until my doctor returns back from vacation." And she was asking me, "I hope nothing happens to my doctor because she's on vacation in Nigeria." I said, "Nothing will happen to your doctor," I said, "because I had a lot of kidnapping." There's a lot of, you know, all the bad stories they hear about Nigeria. But the story is the same for all of the professions around the world. Wherever Nigerians are, they're doing very well. Forget about the terrible stories you hear about credit card scams. People who are doing credit card scams are small compared to Nigerians who are performing wonders, you know, all over the world. As we have reached the point where these Nigerians are asking, when is it that we can go home and even support our country? And a lot of people want to go home. In fact, a lot of Nigerians who are abroad want to go home and provide free services at home. But they've not had a country that they can go back to. And it doesn't look like there's any plans to create a country that they can go back to. Because no matter how nice, I would like to describe Nigeria to you, things are not nice at home, I'm not scaring you. Right? I am not scaring you. The country is in shambles. In fact, I have not been to any other country in the last eight months. And I've traveled a little bit within Africa and outside of Africa. That is as terrible as the way Nigeria is being governed. But if you walk into Nigeria today and you turn on a Nigerian television authority, they will be telling you stories as if Nigeria is so elegant. You start looking out of the window and wondering if you're in Nigeria. The propaganda that the political parties are telling in terms of what they claim is happening in terms of development. You have to constantly be looking out of the window to say, "Are they talking about Nigeria?" You know, they're, it's gotten to the point where they're even going out to steal development projects in other parts of the world and putting them on Facebook and claiming they are happening in Nigeria. It is how shameless the leaders of Nigeria, I wouldn't call them our leaders because they are not our leaders. It's how shameless the leaders of Nigeria have become. But there has to be a time in the history of this particular country that we must all take a decision. We must reach a breaking point regarding Nigeria that says, "Look, enough is enough." That we cannot continue to walk like an elephant but eat like an ant. That is where we are right now, ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, and our family out here in the diaspora. We need to join hands together to take our country, Nigeria, back. And there is no better time, in fact, we have no time on our hands. Because you probably have heard some people saying repeatedly, as if they are programmed to accept defeat, that we have, we need more time. They are saying in their own mind that, "Well, let's, these feeling, these feeling leaders, let them spend another four years." It's not yet our time. They go and wait till 2020. That's what people say to us. And they're saying that if we are talking about the development of Nigeria, we should have done what we are doing now, yesterday. In fact, the idea is belated, the idea of taking back Nigeria is late by almost 20 years. Because of the work that needs to be done and done immediately to put Nigeria on the path of progress. Which is not going to happen with the current set of leaders. Who are there only to take care of their own personal interests. I am not going to lie to you that I have anger towards them. Because sometimes people say, "Well, maybe my tone is a little bit aggressive." And I'm saying to them that if you are Nigeria, if you've seen Nigeria, the condition in which it is now, I don't know how many of you have been home in recent times, and that you are not angry, then something is wrong with you. Because everything about Nigeria's tis today should elicit anger from anybody that is referred to as a Nigerian. It doesn't even matter whether you are Nigerian or not, everybody should be angry for and on behalf of Nigerians. And a lot of people are not only angry, they are disappointed in Nigeria and Nigerians because of the condition of Nigeria today. It is the reason we organized ourselves about eight months ago to start a movement known as Take It Back Movement, which I compare. Before then, I used to be the publisher of Sahar Reporters, which is a newspaper based online that operated from New York City in the last 12 years. And that newspaper has done a lot of expose, discussing on a daily basis, exposing on a daily basis, breaking news out of Nigeria. And I've done it so well that it has become a force to reckon with in the newspaper world or in the news world. In fact, if you think what Jim, uh, was it Jim Costa, Costa of CNN did to Trump, what are they, it was a big deal. Those are things that I have done before, years ago, when ministers used to come to New York. I would go and hijack the microphone from them and shame them, but these guys have no shame. So I decided I was taking to the next level, and that was why we started organizing Nigerians all over. And created the first major global movement that blew up rapidly. Of Nigerians within Nigeria, outside of Nigeria, Nigerians everywhere to take Nigeria back. And about two and a half months ago, we registered a political party known as the African Action Congress. And that party had a convention recently in Lagos. That was massive, over 3,000 people attended the convention, mostly young people. And I became the candidate of the party to run as the president of the federal republic next year, February, in the election. And the good news to all of us, or for all of us, is that this party has become widely accepted in Nigeria. Very, very popular across Nigeria, popular outside of Nigeria. And for the first time in Nigeria, is the party that has spent the least money but had the most impacts. We have not been able to successfully raise up to 10, I mean, 100,000 dollars on GoFundMe, where we raised funds online through crowdfunding. We have only raised, I think, 96,000 dollars as of today. Right? But the political parties against which we have been fighting are parties. One of them, in Potakos, gave each delegate 5,000 dollars to vote for them. About 3,000 delegates were in Potakos. Abu Bakr, former vice president of Nigeria, who virtually became the presidential candidate of the People's Democratic Party, as they call it, but in Nigeria, it's a fact that Papa the civilian became. Yes. Or President Muhammadu Buhari, who is the leader of the All Progressives Party, also spent billions, they have already spent billions and put aside even more. The All Progressive Party, by the way, is referred to as the All Present Criminals, ABC. These guys have money to spend, money that is stolen from our people. But we are just around begging for funds. But within such a short time, ladies and gentlemen, we have become a force to reckon with across Nigeria. We are a nice highway, you know, and as I was going, I think there were trains as well, everything, you know. It's so, why would there not be people who are proud to live in rural areas? If they can find whatever they want, roads, railway, water, electricity? You know, it was the first time, even though I'd been living in America, that I knew that there are two Americas. The rural, very progressive, I mean, progressive inner cities and very, very conservative. Because what they were saying on radio on my way to, I almost turned back. They didn't live in the America that I was coming from. You know, they had different ideas about America, they were talking about, you know, they were really, really conservative people. Like, you know, I don't know how you can manage there, in the sort of, especially anything outside of, you know, the three cities. Those guys are crazy. Whatever they're saying on, on, on the radio, I was like, I kept looking around, you know, like, I hope Nigerians don't come and eat me raw. You know, because they were, they didn't even hide the fact that they were racist on radio. Anyways, but that's America for you. But Nigeria needs to get to that place where you think about it. We need to fight corruption, we need an economy that works for the people of Nigeria. And people have been shouting that, you know, we need to restructure Nigeria, that is true. But the restructuring of Nigeria that is going to be anchored by an Atiku, you know, they are the arm. His first promise, not first, but the most, the most, you know, prominent statement he has made since he started his presidency, presidential aspiration or candidacy was today. He said, "I'm going to sell 90% of NMC." You know, that is what the Eurobaf people call Obama Koteleita. That is, this guy meant business. And if he's selling NMC, he's selling it to Atiku. That's all. That was what he did. Under Abbas al-Jom, they sold a lot of things too. Everything they could sell, they sold. But look at the way Nigeria is today. They sold Nigerian airways, they sold Nigerian shipping line, they sold roads to themselves, they sold bridges to themselves, they sold schools to themselves. They did so well that while public education was being destroyed, Atiku was able to build for himself a university. And the school fees of that university cannot be afforded by a Nigerian. That's investments in, is in Yola, and that was the, that was the place where I did my NYC. The same thing with Abbas al-Jom. So, but trust me, our people with the poverty mentality are embracing the auctioning of their future that is about to happen by calling themselves Atiku leaders. But Atiku is not the only problem. Even the Baba himself, the lifeless one, is also going to destroy Nigerians. The man has no plan for Nigeria, and they are not pretending about it. It is the most frivolistic, the most nepotistic president ever that we ever had. Today, I was reading on my way here, he has made a series of appointments again, he can't find anybody but his son-in-law. Last week, it was brother-in-law. The week before, it was daughter, most of his ministers are related to him. They don't care about it, they don't care about the diversity of Nigeria, but that's not even my issue. If a president comes to Nigeria and he can find everybody his house, who can make Nigeria work, so be it. I'm not hung up on the character, all of the things they design, please, I should help Nigeria. But when you have a incompetent president, putting more incompetent members of his family to run the country, the country is about to go down. But we also have plans to provide healthcare to our Nigerian people. Provide education to Nigerian people, I have no control, like I said, think about it. If you are in Minnesota, you would also have henchmen killing farmers. But the reason why it won't happen is because you have ranches. The moment you step outside of there, all the way into Minnesota, if you find, we do America as they call it, you find branches, left, right and center. Do you know that from those ranches, they make fertilizers out of the dung of the cows? They even generate electricity, biogas from it. It is what the way the world is, but Nigeria, the life of a cow is more important than the life of a Nigerian person. Because of the lifeless man, Buhari. So Nigeria must not be doomed to just this two-way backwards. We must embrace a future that will make all of you be hungry and thirsty to return back home. Because let me tell you, as beautiful as it is here, we also must start thinking progressively about the future. It might get to a point, the way America is going, that even if you're a U S citizen, they might cancel your citizenship, but there's nothing anybody can do about it. I'm serious, with the way they are going about it, literally have been able to get away with since Trump came into office. Don't overrule the fact that one day you might find out that everything that you have as documentation will become null and void. Because at the end of the day, it's your country. Even those of you who are citizens who are naturalized, there's a chief by the back of your American passport that says you are from Nigeria. There's no question about it, go to Atlanta. The Homeland Security, they are the control people, they know when Nigerian plane lands. They are looking for indominos. I'm telling you, they don't, they don't mess with you, they pull you aside, did you bring indominos, asking how do you know about indominos? This is Nigerian people now, people always bringing all kinds of things into the U S. We are the only people treated that way. I'm serious. Because why, it's because of the way they see us at home, is the way our mother does treat us. That's the way other people treat us outside. Because they look at it, who is going to defend you? Something happened to me on my way back from Australia in Dubai. Anytime I carry, you know, hand luggage and it's much, airline will say to you, check it in for free. In Dubai, they ambush me, they were wearing hand luggage and collecting, they made me pay one hundred and seventy dollars. You know, I've never had to pay for hand luggage and I've traveled a little bit far and wide. But you know why they do it, because they know it's Nigeria, they would never try that with an American, because you do it to an American, you are not going to get the business anymore. But they know that Nigerians are no defenders of your interests in their government. If you ask, where do you get home, and you go and tell the Nigerian official that this is what they did to me in Dubai, they will ask, who sent you to Dubai? I was going to Dubai. It's, it's the response we get, it's like, it's a programmed response. Because they are not working for you, they don't even understand that there's a sense of protection that must happen to their citizens. Whatever they may find themselves, I mean, imagine people who not even have to process your passport. Why would they care about what happened to you outside the country? You can hardly find, and I've never had luck, I don't know if anyone will be able to handle it, to call a Nigerian consulate or embassy and somebody will pick up your phone. It's never happened before. You go to New York, most of them are watching home movies in the offices. If they are helping you process your passport, they think they have to, you have to. In fact, the corruption that in Nigeria is also there, comes from everywhere you go. They are always, they bring it here. The Nigerian house in New York has the same problem Nigeria has, half of the building is without electricity. But yes, Nigeria, because they haven't paid their electricity bill. Yes, I, I know this because I live in New York. So it is just what makes us angry. And it must make all of us angry, but the anger that we have, it's time to channel that anger into something progressive. And the thing that is progressive that we want to do must also be revolutionary. We must do what Nigeria has never done before. One is to vote for a Nigerian leader irrespective of their religious or ethnic affiliation. The era of Zodi should be permanently abandoned. The era of worlds which who do you worship should be permanently discarded. Because they have used those things to divide and deceive Nigerians over the years. We have had very great Christian leaders, the moment they get into office, they don't even know Christ. We have had great Muslim leader, in fact, we have had fanatical Muslims, the moment they get into office, they don't know Muhammad. We need a Nigerian leader who is going to work for the Nigerian people. Whose only religion is service to the Nigerian humanity. Whose only ambition is Nigerian person and not Yoruba, Ahsa or Igbo. Because Nigeria has had all ethnic groups, religious leaders, they don't even remember their people. In fact, what I know about Nigerian leaders is that the moment it is time to steal, they have no excuses. Yes, at that time, there's no Igbo, there's no Ahsa, there's no Yoruba, they speak English. This is a lack of corruption in the country. And at that time, they had no problem with their economics or mathematics to share the money. Even the ones that can't find certificates for anything will be able to bring out calculators. And calculate what is due to them, even if it's remaining one liar at home, I can say, hmm, this is not complete. That's the kind of leaders that we have. So our program project, sorry, our manifesto is in ten places and the acronym is P I S A D, which I have tried to describe to you, which is number one, security, power, electricity, infrastructure, anti-corruption, which is a C. Economy, restructuring of Nigeria, health, education, agriculture and tourism. Those ten things working together in the way we have broken it down in our program of action. If you see our manifesto, you'll be surprised. But what is very clear is that even what we are proposing is small compared to what we can do within a short time. Would it not surprise you that in a country known as Morocco, to yesterday, just launched a fast-moving train? Yes, the fastest on the continent of Africa. Morocco, of all people, of all countries, sorry, launched with France, the president of France came there. And they are launching the fastest train, I think it's going to be two, three hundred and twenty-seven kilometers per hour. Which means that if you are taking that train from Lagos to Abuja, you can get to Abuja in two hours. By train. Those of you who follow me, you should go and watch a video of me in Lagos entering the fastest train in the world, which moves at thirteen kilometers per hour. And it's the dirtiest thing ever, the windows are blown out, in fact, I don't know how Nigerians take suffering. Because they were inside, they sweating it out, you know, and I'm looking at them like, at what point would they push you to a point of no return? Well, how far can the leaders push you before you react? Because, you, you, even if pigs are kept in those coaches that I entered, the pigs will react. Or the animal rights people, we take the government to court and say, they can't afford for you to be transporting pigs like this. Pigs must have dignity too. But Nigerians are there, they're just very happy, they were asking me, just, uh, tell, when you come to office, just make sure that it's more frequent, every thirty. I said, no. We are not using this one when we come to office, we are shutting down the railway system. We, we, we are not using, they have sworn in, I'm retiring every railway coach that I saw that day. I'm not, we are not making this frequent. It is, it's, it's what it is. So I just have to let you know that a new, brand-new Nigeria is possible. And that we are desirous of making it happen. All we need from you is your support. And your support can come in various ways. But I want to surprise you, the way I need your support is not the way you think we want it. Some of you think it's about funding, you know, no. I want you to use your economic power to talk to your people at home, to change their ways and change their voting pattern. They should stop voting for fools, they should stop voting for idiots, they should stop voting for criminals, they should stop voting for armed robbers. They should stop voting for biots in the country and vote for people who can fix the country. So that you also here can rest. So that your life will no longer be about Western Union or what remits or pink express or money remittance only. In Australia, after we've finished talking, the people who are living in Australia said, they have told their families, if you don't vote for the right person, they are not sending money to you anymore. Yes, people are going to sit up. It might sound like, just try it, call them and say, if you don't, if you vote for Buhari Atifu, I'm not sending money to you, they'll say, ah. You are not sending money, who do you want us to vote for? Tell us. You are not punishing them, you are just asking them to do the right thing. Because the people who are defending these criminals the most, they don't get anything from them. The most they get from them is the five thousand naira during election day. And after that five thousand naira, you'll never hear from people in government again because the five thousand naira you collected is the money for your road to your school, your hospital paid to you at once. If you divide five thousand naira by four years, how much do you even get per day? Two-two naira, and it's not up to that, four years, five thousand naira, I don't think so. You know, even if it is two-two naira, even if it is five thousand naira per day, is that worth it? So our people also have been to be told the hard truth. And the good news is that it's working. When they were doing the registration of voters, we are calling people to tell people at home that, as a condition for sending money, send me your E B C. A lot of people said they are having members send their E B C, so somehow that all worked. But the next one is, as a condition for sending more money, vote for the right person. And if they do, you discover that you will not need to be sending money as frequently as you send money now. Right? Maybe you'll get to a point that the people in Nigeria can be sending money to America, we have tried. Let's change even the cost of remittances for the first time. And it's possible because Nigeria is a blessed country. With over thirty-four million resources spread around the entire country. With oil, with people, two hundred million people, very resourceful people, very innovative people, very aggressive people, very productive people. But we just have a single problem, leadership. And all we are asking for is for that leadership to change and change forever, starting from next year. February sixteenth, twenty nineteen is the date of the presidential election. A A C?
Take it back!
Take it back?
Action!
And we are presenting the most formidable candidates in that election. In form of the person standing in front of you today. A A C?
Take it back!
Take it back?
Action!
We are hoping that when next we appear here in front of you, they will be as president of the federal republic of where. And you will be proud that you're part of history. Because history is about to be made. Thank you, thank you so much. A A C? A A C? Take it back?
Action!
Thank you, thank you, we're gonna have party later, we'll get party downstairs, so don't leave yet. Didn't your heart burn inside of you to hear it, can you speak? Oh, don't worry, I, I'll take, we'll take questions, we'll take questions, we'll take questions, we'll take questions. We're gonna move into a question in time and we're asking you, Latili, we have food downstairs for you. We're gonna, we have to feed our people, right? We don't go places without giving food and the good stuff helps us think better.
Ask questions downstairs.
Yes, I'm sorry?
Questions downstairs.
Yes, we're gonna have personal questions downstairs as well. But we want to engage you here so you can ask questions, please keep it short. This man's time is pretty expensive. But we're gonna take two or three questions at a time. And please listen to everyone else who have asked questions so we're not repeating questions. We can keep it to a minimum of one short sentence. He's very, uh, intellectual enough to answer most questions in a combination way. So, uh, the mic is ready for you guys here and then we're gonna engage some more downstairs. We're gonna have a one-to-one where we can have music and talk. But at the same time, as we are here, uh, we're asking for your support. The computer has said we need economic support, we need people's support. We are the people we've been asking for. So in any way, anytime you're ready, uh, we know how to help you feel the energy of your, of your contribution. So we'll take a question, but at the same time, if you feel the energy and the love to want to give something, say, I have a million dollars for you. Why not? That is why we're here. We're not, we're not afraid to say that, I'm not afraid to say that because I believe in this, and maybe you believe in something. I, it was, uh, Dale Carnegie, Andrew Carnegie says, no one cares what you know until they know how you care. It works for me, if you're talking to me, you want to convince me of something, you have to show me first that you care. Because if you don't, you're wasting your time, then I am going to have to hurry up. So I'm gonna hurry up. He's gonna be going around, I've got Lea, he's gonna be going around, taking your questions. And please, let's, 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 let's make it a good question session.
So questions?
Two. Questions, the first lady here.
Okay, when the situation is like that, they, there is no way to go votes and we don't get elections under the rate, they count it on one, you know. So that's like, how do you do it, how do you fix that? They're asking a whole question, you know. And the second question is, given how, if you're the next presidential election, like, which you go for, you know, there's a lot, we're hoping, I'll go, I'll try. Where can you start to fix the country? Because right now, I've seen Nigeria like is dead and gone, how do we bring it back to life? Because I just came back and it was really looking terrible. Because I just came back and it was really looking terrible.
Thank you.
I just want to share with you what you've been up to.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, sir, for your time. And I sincerely pray that God grant you a good season.
Amen.
Uh, this is my question. Even though we are very few here, but I believe that we go back and spread the gospel to others. Uh, I remember when President Obasanjo was president for two countries. He was in New York also. And some reporters asked him about the economy issue there. That, what does this seem about? And Obasanjo said, well, I know who is not going to win. But I'm not going to tell who is going to. And this is an election that is yet to be conducted. So my question is, what is, what plan do you have regarding the, the bringing of the?
Thank you, there's two more for you as well. I have a lady back.
I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my question is this, uh, Mr. Shorere. Uh, because I've been telling my people back home because I'm tired of Western Union remit, MoneyGram, everything, you know? I know, you know, it's not that, uh, I'm trying to say I send a lot of money, sorry people, but, you know, but the issue is that if you have compassion for people, it's just like a letter that was delivered to us. If you have this sense of humanity in you, you will be outraged at all these things that you are hearing. I was, uh, recently I checked on Sahara reporters and they were, they brought out this like a small, uh, video whereby a patient was, uh, on, on the, was on oxygen for two, three days. And the oxygen ran out. And the hospital just decided to let the patient go just because of oxygen. That is ridiculous. We need to, you know, I, I, I'm sorry, I just feel so outraged with all those situations. So the question is that, you know, uh, I called some of my people, they say, oh, we don't know him yet. And I also watched some, some people asking question, they said, oh, we don't know him, you know? How, what are the things that we are, you are, you are putting in place for people to really know you? Because we are tired of all these old papers, they need to go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will answer with your question. And that is part of the reason we are here today is to be able to be known by more people. Uh, I will say that within eight months, the name recognition has grown, uh, fantastically. And it is not as if people don't know us. It just happened that they know and love their oppressors more. Otherwise, even when you don't know, you seek the knowledge of what you don't know that can give you deliverance and liberation, right? But Nigerians, some of them, not all of them, are in love with their oppressors. So much that they keep singing and talking and embracing and praising their oppressors. But of course, our job is to reach out to those who don't know. Because it's not just about me now. It's about the political party. As a matter of fact, when the ballot is printed, it doesn't carry my name. It carries the logo of the political party, which is AAC. But of course, people love when they understand who the person is they want to vote for. But guess what? In the history of Nigeria, nobody has traveled within such a short time as widely as we have done of reached as many people as possible who are out there looking for information on how to make Nigeria a better place. But we are here to seek your help and support. So that we can reach out to more people through radio jingles, through banners, posters, and all those traditional ways to reach people who are not educated. For those who are mostly educated, they know already. And they're embracing and interacting and engaging with us. For those who may not have known, the people in the diaspora are doing a fantastic job. And for this, I want also to give our people in diaspora a round of applause. For that great job they're doing of calling people. I know of people who call an average of forty people per day or a week to introduce Shorere to them, to introduce AAC to them, and introduce Pfizer to them. There's a program of action that will wipe out poverty in Nigeria. So, it's a lot of work. But another thing is you also not discounting us is that it's also a strategy by the political parties to keep saying, oh, we don't know him, we don't know him. But when you ask them, what about Sahara reporters? The guy, oh, we know him because we approached all of them, the thieves, before with Sahara reporters. I'm not saying, it is not always true that they don't know. But Nigeria should not be doomed to knowing only two people who are thieves in the country, who have stolen their future, who have destroyed their past and are planning to destroy their future. So please help us by supporting us with funds. Support us by calling family, people at home, spread the message. And the good news I can report to you as we speak here today is that with the little of hearts in terms of resources, the newspapers, even in their regular polling, newspapers are now coming out and saying, oh, if you talk about Buhari article, the top person is Shorere. That counts for something, right? And this was made possible by you. But we have told them that we are number one. Because something is about to give. And that's what we give. We let everybody know that person who is going to bring about the development that they have been looking for. The better Nigeria, the best Nigeria that they have never seen before. And we'll make that happen, uh, as soon as possible. The question about reading, sir. You see, I have covered elections a lot. And that means I have covered a lot of big elections. In fact, my first, the first election that I covered was Sahara reporters. I was able to get the result of the election before the election held. That was the election that brought, yes, I published it. That was the election that brought Yehadua to office. There was an election that, the health, I think, after that, in which the ballot papers deliberately did not carry, uh, numbers that could have distinguished each other. But they had, all the ballot paper had the same numbers. Nigeria's ability to read was surprised God, you know? They did that one. After that, as we followed them around, the electoral process has improved because of digitalization and of course, technology. That is why they are no longer carrying ballot boxes anymore. The one they are embarking upon now, they no longer tamp out with the results. They do what they all see and buy. They hang around at the ballots, uh, the polling booths or polling units, and they offer cash to people to buy their votes. And whichever party offered the most, in fact, in the case of Ekiti and Oshu State, it got to a point where it became a bazaar right in front of the polling booth there. PDP will give five thousand. APC will say, well, I make it six thousand. PDP will make it seven thousand, APC will make it ten thousand, right there. But guess what? All of this with visualizing, because a lot of Nigerians are wiser now. And the party that had the most money in two thousand and fifteen did not win the election. Which was the ruling party then, People's Democratic Party. So, what I want to say as a final answer to that is that an election can only be rigged if the people are willing to be rigged out of their future. If Nigerians determine that they cannot win their election, nobody will be able to rig this election. And we guarantee you that the number of people who are showing interest in this election has never happened before. There are over twelve million new voters that have just joined the voters' row now. And from the analysis we are getting from them, they are angry young people who are ready for death. The number, the highest number of voters a president of Nigeria has ever had won an election with is fifteen million votes, that was Buhari. So if you have twelve million people already, who are waiting on the wings to vote and who are not ready to sell their votes, all we need is just maybe another four million votes and the election will be over. And I can tell you that nobody is out there, the Nigerians we talk to, not many who are planning to vote for these people. They know. Of course, you hear the stupid argument that, eh, you know Shorere is the one that can do it, but where would they get the money to win the election? Where would they get the dogs to rig the election? Where would they get assassins to kill people? Stupid arguments like that. But in the middle of it, there's a lot of political consciousness as well. And part of the reason why we are encouraged is that the diaspora is fully, fully involved in this, in bringing about their own experiences and education, and even under frustration and system. And that will not, that will not, that will come for something in this election. You know, there's a lot more, uh, that we're planning that it won't make sense to be revealing them here because our enemies are not resting as well. As we are talking to you here, they are watching us all over the world. They are watching in Nigeria what has Shorere said again today. In fact, it used to be that if I said something, they would go and do it. But now, I'm saying so many things, they can't catch up. So, so we just keep some of our strategies to ourselves. And, uh, my sister, welcome back from the moment. I hope you brought in all the resources for us. Uh, I understand how you feel. You're right, Nigeria is dead. But what is still living in Nigeria is Nigerian spirit. In fact, what is keeping Nigeria alive are people like you and me, who are not giving up on Nigeria. You know, sometimes they'll tell you that, oh, America, US, and Britain giving Nigeria foreign aid. We did a calculation, I think it came out three days ago. America in the last three years only supported Nigeria with seven hundred million dollars. Do you know how much, how much we send more? Fifty billion naira is what we send from every year. Through official channels, when I mean official channels, Western Union, MoneyGram, Water Redmit, Pink Express, TransferWise. You know, and the most important one, Happy Ticket Home. You know, that's the most powerful money transfer system. All you can do at the airport. If you add everything together, we're probably talking about a hundred billion dollars every month. So, we have a stake in that country. And you raise the question about where do we start from when we get in there? I'll tell you, there's a lot of small, small things we can start with that will make Nigeria surprise you. In few months, I will, for the sake of those of you who go from abroad, I will start with putting bulbs at the airport. And that cannot be too expensive to do. We will add toilets and wash at the airport. We will remove the customs that ask you for bribe at the airport. We will paint the walls at the airport, right? We will light the runway at the airport. That's for those of you who are outside, right? Those are simple simple things of finishing the highway between Lagos and Lagos, right? This, which has been under construction for twenty, twenty years, right? Bringing solar energy to improve on our electricity. A A C?
Take it back!
Recruiting doctors to man our hospitals, right? Paying workers minimum wage that we can afford, right? And sending our children to school. There are thirteen million kids that are out of school. If we spend a hundred thousand naira each to get them back to school, you will be surprised at how great our education system will start to be. Or in, for God's sake, for God's sakes, put roof on those primary schools that only have six blocks. The roofs cannot be too expensive. The question I ask myself when I visit some rich people's homes in Nigeria is, how is it that they have money to get all the bamboo from Italy and you cannot build a primary school with six blocks? A governor will have a mansion that can build five primary schools. A governor, just one governor. There's a governor in Nigeria that was sent the other day collecting dollars on video. Five million. If you spend five billion dollars to build schools in Canada, probably they won't be a majority.
Gandola?
Again, yes, that's Gandola that can do it, they call him Gandola. You understand? Five billion dollars can do fantastic for schools, for even hospitals. But these guys are not interested, they are not. So, let's start from the small, small things that can be done in weeks, months. You know, let's grow those crops that can be harvested in six months so that we can have food security. Corn don't last six months to grow anymore. Tomato don't last six months to grow anymore. Grow crops everywhere you can find adequate lands. Bring in tractors instead of SUVs for big men so that they can be tilling the land, irrigate the land. These are simple, simple things that can be done. It is part of what is driving me crazy, right? When I go on the highway in Nigeria and you find good traffic and you find out that it's just one small crater that causes traffic. Can this be filled overnight? It can be filled overnight. You guys live here where America, I see that a lot of the time, they say this road is under construction, it will be done in twenty twenty. You get there by twenty nineteen, the thing has been finished. It's as if they deliberately give you a depression that it will last for a long time and be finished, but they don't have the time. In Nigeria, we don't even need, sometimes it's just to fill the port holes. That cannot be difficult to do. But when you have a country where police, we hire somebody to dig the road so that they can use it to slow down pass, uh, drivers to collect bribes. You might think it's a lie, it's not a lie. They deliberately cut off the roads in Nigeria, policemen, so that they can collect bribes. We saw it when we were travelling around between Butter Court and Warring, in what they call east-west, uh, highway. Everywhere you see police, you see a big truck. And the guy was driving, I said, it's police that dug it up. The policeman that digged the road. Because that's the only way they can collect bribes. So, and most importantly, to have a commander in chief of the armed forces that is commanding the armed forces. Not all these generals who are promoting terrorism because of their own personal interests. The reason why Boko Haram is flourishing in Nigeria is because our generals are making a killing out of the prolongation of the war. I challenge them several times because they know that I don't despise. That's what I do, I report on them. I know all of them, I know how they do their deals. They don't want Boko Haram to end. The day Nigerian army wants Boko Haram to end, it will end. It's the same Nigerian army that ended the war in Syria alone and Liberia. I cannot fight common Boko Haram. You are wondering where is it that Boko Haram is getting arms from? And Nigerian army cannot get arms to fight back. So, this is the situation, my sister, is it's not as difficult as it makes it sound. You know, when they want to press panic buttons in Nigeria, they tell you that Nigeria is a complex country to govern, right? It's like complex, it's multi-ethnic, it's multi-this, it's multi-that. It's multi-complex, it's a lie. The question you ask yourself is that if the system is so complex, why is it so easy to steal from it? It's not complex anything. But you have people who don't know what they are doing, who have no intellect, they have no capacity, they have no capability. You leave a country of two hundred million to them, people to, for them to govern. They cannot govern it, they can't, some of them cannot, cannot run a McDonald's shop. And you ask them to govern the country. You are killing yourself and that is, this kind of blind alley that Nigerians want to walk back into with this set of leaders again by claiming that, oh, there are only two political parties who can win the election. Who told you there are only two political parties who can win the election? It's not true. They don't even have structures. When we went around, they only have retail outlets. When we went around, they only have retail outlets for buying and selling elections for intimidation and harassment, assassination of people. Those are no structures. We told them, right? Is it sometimes, you know, we have a lot to say and there will be no time? And sometimes we have plenty of time and there's not much to say. Someday there will be time and there will be a lot of, a lot to say. But that will be in the new Nigeria. So let's take.
A A C.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, before we take the next question, I'd like to take a moment to recognize uh one of our important guests. Uh, and I'm gonna ask Prezo because he can talk all day, I'm telling you. Uh, so please keep it short and the next question, please keep it short. I will not try to not take questions, we're just trying to get you to where you need to be and we wanna eat. I'm hungry and I'm sure he's hungry. Um, Minnesota Institute of Nigeria for Development.
Mine.
Mine. She's a, she's the two remaining waves in the city. But thank you.
Great leader.
Would you like to say something, please?
Probably, uh, I'm going to say my comment. Actually, uh, since we have a little time downstairs.
Yeah.
What's going on right now?
A little bit more. Um, I'm starting.
You can give us.
My, my, my. Alright, I uh, you know, when I, when I was, I got this invitation, I think one of your colleagues came to one of our meetings and spoke to us briefly about your mission. And, and uh, we said alright, uh, a person of my uh cabinet there here um to, to kind of listen in. Um, as an organization that represents all Nigeria, I uh, you know, once then you said there was a common tension was that uh, we're an area where we can no longer talk ethnic group. Um, mine perhaps is, not perhaps, is actually this organization that is not uh, is not political, is not religious. Um, we, we strive on believing that we represent all Nigerians in Minnesota. Um, and, and just listening to you tonight, uh, it, it still have a glimpse of hope, a beacon of light, if you will, uh, to begin to look at uh Nigeria, especially Nigeria's in diaspora. Uh, like you rightly said, um, yes, we're here, but home is home.
That's right.
Uh, we do look to what's happening. Uh, and, and what we encourage our people to do here is to, perhaps, just perhaps if we're able to gather ourselves here, we might just begin to, even if this quite is a change or impact back there. Um, you know, so that's really why we're here tonight. I'm hoping at some point we'll have time to talk to you a little bit more and, and, and let us also people that are in this room to know uh who we are. Because if you're in this room today, that says to me that you do, most of you reside here instead of Minnesota. Alright, so if you're interested in what uh, uh, what I'm saying, Mr. Shorare is saying, then that says to me, why are you not in mine? Because if you're trying to affect change in Nigeria, perhaps we should gather ourselves here first.
That's right.
So that's really what I wanna say right now.
So before we take the next set of questions, I'm gonna be the quickest snippet for you real quick. Uh, again, like uh, we've all said at the beginning of this program that we need your help. So a quick snippet on GoFundMe says, I'm sure he talked about it as well. It says, Nigerian people, our goal is to raise two million dollars. We have a clean, transparent and open model in order to advance our social media fund, our election, we need some kind of presidency, right? Without interference of godfathers and godmothers, which of course we know that that's what's going on in Nigeria. You know, you have a godmother out there fund you and uh they extend a favor at the end of the day or whenever you take office. But this is not what we are planning, we are planning a clean uh fundraising in where you give from your heart. So this is where I come in before the next set of questions. So we're gonna start the fundraising right now. I know we, we've spent a lot of time here listening. Uh, thank you so much for everyone that uh been talking to us. Thank you for the question, the Q and A session. We have food and refreshment downstairs. But now my time has come to actually uh get money from you folks. So I need you folks to keep your hand in your pocket and uh let's start raising some money.
I see, thank you mother. She's great wearing that check, that's an actionable woman, that's an A D C, please clap for her.
We'll be taking your question, but in the meantime, please consider, keep your hand in your pocket and uh.
Yes, and this is the last set of questions. And I want to, I want to just let me know that, once he's done here, he's gotta be up at four AM in the morning. So to Chicago and then after that online. So i- if you just write us something, we'll come, like my brother sitting here, we'll, we'll, we'll. Uh, we have credit cards as well. We're ready for you to get your credit card, your Q and A check. You can give us twenty dollars, a hundred thousand dollars.
Not unless it's small, although we don't want deep ones, but we want money that folds, you know.
Next question, next question please, and then, and then we'll try to date downstairs.
So the next set of question, I think I have a, so next to gentlemen here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, a round of applause, we have uh two hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, my, thank you. Alright, the next question, let me take her in, then out.
So my question goes that uh those parties, they've been, yes, they've been organized, they've been there for months. And I've seen there's a lot of awareness coming from young people tuning into this present uh election cycle. How would I feel that is there any talks into coming into a formidable opposition to maybe throughout this table? Because I wonder, and also if A A C has been able to go to the looks and products and have uh formidable grassroots candidates. Uh, the aspirants for O S D are not, my friend, I'm even surprised why, for the spirit of Hakoka, we have enough, so I'm not seeing daily with you. But my point is this, how much of synergy can, are you, you know, coming together within the young people coming together and having a formidable opposition? And how much of candidates are they being able to put down to the grassroots? Because if you have some of the ways in the, in some of you and is a strong youth leader diary that we have great source, great support to your candidates nationally? And also have we been able to send candidates in all these areas? The five and a half and seven local governments that can, can have a strong impact? Because it's not gonna be easy for you going down with what you've been doing, you're building only thirty states under the United States. Maybe it's only in the still capitals, there's still a lot of startups that are needing to reach. So I'm asking, why are we doing that, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much, we have a question here.
My name is Fatima and I'm also, I, as our president said, I want to create a list of things. I'm going to be surprised that you didn't mention the possibility of those of us in diaspora to be able to vote when we get there. And then another thing is that uh what other resources are you losing? Because Nigerians, Afghans and other uh, I'm saying uh political parties, I believe that the country affords some level of protection for the candidates as well as part of, uh, you know, some assistance for them to be able to run a very viable campaign.
Yes, okay, other question. Do you want to take more questions?
Um, just before the next, uh, if you're writing a check, if you're writing a check, please make it out to take it back, please. Also, um, this is the last question, we need to move on.
Okay.
And uh, we just need to focus on, we wanna recognize people, we wanna recognize, this is uh five hundred dollar father, please give us two hundred dollars. Please give us a big round of applause. That's, that's a wonderful thing.
Okay, uh, to GoFundMe back, we also have a website you can go to. It's the GoFundMe website, it's gofundme.com forward slash sowre2019. And that's spelled G O M N D M T. Okay. G O, that's GoFundMe period S C O N, that's dot com, forward slash sowre, sorry, my accent, that's S O W. No, S O W O R E two thousand and nineteen, two zero one nine. So you can make the issue on the squad and uh, I have a gentleman calling me for a check. Thank you so very much, sir.
Also wanna recognize.
Alright.
Alamasi Adelike Ajai, thank you much, donated a hundred and fifteen dollars. Please give a round of applause. Also, Mr. Wale, man, if I mention your name, you can sue me. So much, thank you so much, a hundred and fifteen.
Okay, uh, please know that we can, we are going downstairs, we can have our one-on-one time as well. Inasmuch as we meet with Jada up there tomorrow morning. So we still have time, but we know that's a full morning, we're early, but we are here downstairs. So please, 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 don't leave yet, okay? We have our one-on-one, we still have Q and A downstairs.
And don't forget that we, there's credit card swipe. We take credit card, we take money order, we take Western Union, just give it a bit. We have, we have, we have the swipe here and you can do it online. This technology has given us the ability to uh have ways to do that.
Alright, um, I have two questions, I'll make it quick. So, so come May twenty nineteen, you win, you're the new president of Nigeria. Can you kind of tell us how much change you think you can accomplish within the first, I don't know, hundred days and then the next years, four years you have to turn? Second question. And I'm just playing devil's advocate here because I love the momentum that you're gaining and the energy is electrifying, you know, your supporters and I want to learn my way. Um, what if you don't win? What next? Do you have a plan? Because I really want you to lose that, you know, momentum, yeah, that fire, that energy.
That's a good question.
What is your plan to do now? And I'm gonna give it to the last question.
Okay.
Um, you know, Mr. Shorare, so, quick question. When I left the country, it was one dollar to a hundred Naira. Uh, today it's, it's a dollar to about three hundred and fifty Naira.
I've lived like fifty years there.
You know, primarily using that being that we, we consume externally more than we produce internally. And no civilized economy can survive like that. Now I know you've got a very spastic plan, but could you give us some more specific um corn ration plan and how you plan to restore the manufacturing and the agricultural sector in the country?
Thank you. So let me start with your question, answering your question. And I, you're right, we cannot sustain Nigeria where it is now. And uh, I've said it this, because I don't know Nigeria produces more to sustain its population of fish. Uh, but a starting point for us to go back to producing, not necessarily manufacturing, but product, using what producing because not, you know, when you talk about manufacturing, this is, you know, it's something that's a little acute, you know, when you talk about the way technology has uh taken issues. It's electricity. Electricity is the first step for me, for Nigeria to get back to their ability to produce. And even for their agricultural sector that you're talking about, without electricity, you can't preserve crops that are, you know, that are harvested. Because Nigeria loses almost eighty percent of uh its uh agricultural products to post-harvest loss. A lot. Because we have no way of preserving things that we grow. Apart from the fact that it's difficult to move them from the farms to the market because there are no roads. You have no ability to preserve things that you produce, just like you do here. I mean, if you get out of here twelve midnight and you want to get something fresh from the supermarket, you get. Why? Because somehow the thing has been preserved to get to you. The vehicles that are bringing them have ability to preserve, they have ability to keep them fresh, whatever you want it. Then you can get whatever you want because things can move from place to place within a very short time. The other part of it is to deliberately also invest in productivity in the country. For example, today, it's easier for people to get dollars, right? Change the dollars in what they call rand trading, make their money. Instead, if you give, if you give allocation of forests to people who are manufacturers, they send it right there, make their profits and turnover, you know, right there. Because the country is not interested in production. That is why Nigeria, I mean, when I said we are not interested, we are not interested because we are not investing in anything that can make us productive. That is why Nigeria is mostly talking about foreign reserve, right? And what is foreign reserve, as I've described it several times, is a credit card for the rich or the credits, uh, the credit for the rich. In the sense that when you are importing goods and services into the country, you have to maintain a certain level of reserve outside so that you can pay for the, so that you can pay for what you are importing, so that to guarantee those imports. And it's most people that import most of the things that are imported into Nigeria. So until we start producing locally, you're right, we are not going to be able to create an economy that will employ people, that will be able to sustain the population, an agricultural system or productive, I mean productivity level that can guarantee food security in Nigeria. We don't have all of that now. You won't be surprised that we are still importing toothpicks. Toothpicks in twenty eighteen is part of the things that are imported. In fact, it was last, I think it was three years ago, when there was a shortage of forests that they banned the importation of toothpicks into Nigeria. I mean, how can it be difficult to make toothpicks in Nigeria? It's, it's, you know, if you see what I'm talking about. So until, there's also a structured way of looking at all these things. You have government investing directly and regulating and monitoring what we've taken to the country versus what we can produce inside the country. We are not making any progress. As to your question regarding hundred days, with due respect, I don't believe in allocating days to governors. Because when you are elected to govern a country, you are not elected to govern on a quarterly basis. Hundred days in office is part of their cake way of governance. Why don't you start the first day you start? Start the day you are sworn in to start doing things that are needed to be done. For example, we can declare, I want to declare state of emergency, the education sector, in the health sector from day one.
Absolutely.
The policy sector, in the power sector, energy sector. So that the country will take it seriously that the new sheriff is in town.
That's right.
Yes, and he's not waiting for hundred days. Because what killed this current regime of Buhari was that they waited six months before they even appointed ministers. So by the time you appointed the ministers, the country has already entered into recession. Nobody was in charge and today, nobody is still in charge as far as I'm concerned. That's the problem. When you have a president that don't have a human resources mentality to appoint people who are capable, I have a brother in the house there, uh, Mark Waachu, that will talk about impure procurement all the time. You know, in Nigeria, the biggest source of corruption is still handwriting contracts or handwritten contract. Whereas a lot of these things would have been done technologically. I ask myself all the time, why do universities in Nigeria need a contractor to buy their laptops? When you can go to a shop across the street? In fact, the university where I teach here, the college where I teach in New York, I buy my laptop from the university store. The university should be selling laptop. Everybody who wants a genuine, original laptop should go to the University of Lagos to buy it. Not the University of Lagos asking contractors to go to a KJ computer building to buy computer for the university. So there's a lot of things wrong with our leaders. And it's the same thing for a lot of things. As president of Nigeria, why would I need to give out contracts to buy things that I can buy on Amazon? With due respect, there's nothing to be ashamed of it. If you, the more quantity you order, the more, the cheaper it is for you. But in Nigeria, you still go to the contractor and then the contractor will go to. But in Nigeria, you still go to the contractor, and then the contractor will go to another contractor, and then the other contractor will go to another contractor. First, the thing doesn't get supplied on time. Secondly, the prices of the goods are, or high time related. And then finally, they not even supply them on time. And when they do supply, there's something they call supplier remove. As the thing has been supplied, it's also been taken out. So the system is in a horrible shape because of corruption, greed. You know, as I have said repeatedly, Nigeria has spent too much money, too much time, too much resources on the greedy, and has forgotten its needy people. And it is time that we change all of that. So, the last question was, did I answer your second question? I'm talking about a lady friend that supports us. The question about, the reason I don't want to ask is I can't even imagine us not winning. That's true. I want to go say it. But I will, I will answer that question. I will answer that question. I understand what you're asking, you know, like, what is, what is, what was our plan B, right? Yes. Yeah, and plan B is this, plan B is to continue to maintain a revolutionary movement. Because, trust me, there are two things that are needed to happen in Nigeria, as far as I'm concerned this time. There are a revolution or an election, and whichever one happens first. If the, if the election doesn't satisfy the revolutionary test of our people, then the revolution will follow the election. Because Nigeria has reached a point where Nigeria, something has to give in Nigeria. And I'm saying this, and it's not a threat, that if the election doesn't satisfy the revolutionary need of our people, a revolution will be the next natural occurrence that will happen in Nigeria. Nigeria cannot escape a revolution. If the election doesn't provide a revolutionary solution to the myriad problems in Nigeria, because two hundred people are not going to keep waiting in bondage forever. People must break free. You guys have been monitoring what is happening in Ethiopia, right? Whoever thought that the nation of Ethiopia could become a nation that where some revolutionary reforms taken with the arresting generals, the arresting former security leaders in the country who are, who uphold the law. The same thing will happen in Nigeria, and they cannot escape this. They cannot escape what is about to hit them in Nigeria. Like I said, it's not a threat, it's a promise that must come to pass in Nigeria. But it's to continue to build this revolutionary movement and continue to preach that, you know, the kind of revolutionary change we need until those things are better, conditions that will be met before we can rest. And I can tell you, guaranteed, that this is something I've done for thirty years. I've evolved over these years, starting from the University of Lagos, where I was part of the pro-democracy movement that brought an end to military rule. And I will continue until Nigeria finds its feet. Even as president, and I'll say this as a nice sale of the cake, I will be an activist president as well. So, I'm not just going to be president and be satisfied with being a president. It has to take a lot of dimensions, and a lot of them are going to be very, very activist in nature. So, I'm not just, I'm not looking to win the election and settling down into office and doing what the old people are doing, which is, you know, just welcoming visitors. Traditionalize today, religious leaders tomorrow. I won't be doing that with due respect. If you're a traditional ruler, stay in your palace. If you're a religious leader, stay in your place of worship. Let the president do his work. My work will be on the road, it will be turning the country into a construction site. And I will be supervisor, day and night, until Nigeria achieves the best as a nation. That's the promise I'm making to you, that you can hold to that promise. Is it possible? Thank you for your question. You were asking about resources that are available in terms of protection for candidates. That's what I hear, right? Yes, as a candidate, we are entitled to protection. And I shouldn't get acquired, but nobody has given us protection. But if you ask me, if I'm a president about protection, security protection, I've said no. Sometimes, it's better to be protected by armed robbers than for police protecting Nigeria. I tell you, this might sound funny to you, but we had a particularly terrible experience in Lagos, where we went to campaign in Surulive area of Lagos, and were held up by area boys. But the guy who invited us, who was one of our candidates for our party, had six mobile policemen armed. Do you know that when the area boys took over, policemen were acting as intermediaries? So, we have to find them something now. Why do we need to bring in here? I think we have to find them something. Everybody there said, instead of bringing police, you should have seen the area boys in advance. It would have been better for you. Did you know that when we left the place, they said it was policemen that took the area boys over? You know, they, 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 we virtually had, died, got something, found that, gave us some money. They asked me for money. I told them, I'm not the richest woman in Nigeria, I don't have the time to give you. I said, if you are sleeping here today, I'll stay here with you, but I don't have money to give you, because I didn't see you. I'm trying to fix this country. But the guy who invited us just had a desperation to free us. Give them money. If the police and area boys have a share of money. So, I personally don't go to, I don't go with police everywhere. But I'll tell you that in some places, it's difficult without some security protection. But you just have to figure out, using your own native intelligence. So, in ensuring your security, but don't rely too much on any security provided by Nigerian government for you. It's the people and your conscience, and the ways, and the best means of protecting yourself. Just have a clean conscience. Don't worry too much about the rest. So, and they don't provide resources for us to campaign. I think, you know, the people who have access to the state treasury are the two major parties. Because the People's Democratic Party have governors who steal money and pass on to them. And of course, Oharri being the president of Nigeria has unlimited access to the treasury as well. We are relying on people like you and regular people in Nigeria, who have, we have a Nigerian account. And people have been donating into those accounts for us as well. In fact, there are people who are donating on GoFundMe and also donating through their Naira account in Nigeria. So many of you have Nigerian Naira account as well. So, these are ways through which we have been raising funds so far, and it's, it's, it's been, it's been great, it's been great. And our hope finally is that, if we can get ten thousand Nigerians across the world, both at home and in Nigeria, which is a small number, to contribute two hundred dollars each, we get two million dollars. And that amount of money is more than enough to finish off these guys. They might have billions, but they don't have people.
In life?
Yes. That's what we have found out. And with little we have, nobody's expecting us to buy them rights. That's the good news. And nobody's expecting us to buy them, you know, Ankara, which is branded clothes that they give to them, to, you know, slave them and put their destinies in, in misery. So, people just expect us to implement our policies and programs that will put Nigeria in part of progress, prosperity, and peace. Once again, thank you. I've been told that we have more time, we will have more time downstairs. And thanks for, thanks to those of you who made contributions to us. Thank you so much.
Take it back! Action! Yes, let's go eat.
We have a donation from Mr. Nimos, five grand euro. I'm not sure, I took it back. Oh, he's still there. Give us a hundred dollars, a round of applause. Another donation, are you guys on GoFundMe? Another cash donation from Mr. Le, who are not going to remind a lot of us. Very darling. Remember, we also have a swipe, in case you want to use your credit card or your debit card to swipe. And again, please, let's go downstairs. We have more time, because I know we are tired. So let's go refresh ourselves downstairs. And we can have our one-on-one session with Mr. Shor again as well. We also have another donation from Mr. Fred, who have, who not for change now, for the game. Fifty dollars, a round of applause. And also, the hundred dollars from Osiri organization, Osani organization. And Mr. Adesey, Olushina, three hundred dollars. So we are getting there. We're getting there. So first, we need to dig deeper, dig deeper into the market, and we can definitely get there, you know, at least. So again, thank you so much. Let's proceed downstairs.
No, 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 I, I, so, thank you. So, let's go, before we go, Mrs. Olushina is one of us, I recognize her because she's amazing. And yes, she's given us the biggest donation tonight. I have other donations, but I'd like to break them before we go. Our madam here, she gave us a hundred dollars, Dr. Fatima T. Larson. And now, we have an additional hundred dollars from Mr. Daniel. No blessing, no blessing. Nothing is small, okay? Let's move downstairs, let's go eat, let's go listen to music, and let's, let's keep, let's keep it moving.
Thank you so much. You have a future, I ask you more questions.
Thank you so much. Good.
So fifty dollars, this one, yes. The losses that have been on you, that have gone on you. A round of applause for Mr. Oyewu, fifty dollars. Thank you so much.
Take it back! Action!
So, it's called black suits.
Okay, okay. Get it on the up desk. Okay, it was a problem.
Oh, okay.
So we're taking pictures, we're also taking checks.
There's more pictures down there.
Let's go eat, let's go eat.
Oh, you join, oh, you take. Okay, okay.
And this will be posted on Facebook, on his Facebook, get in the picture. You want to get in the picture? Everybody.
No, take the other side.
This goes on show.
Take, take this one. Can you take this one? Fine, but take this one self.
One.
Why do I have my timer on this?
Two. Oh, here.
Do you have a timer too?
No, 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 I'm, you, everybody's looking up. This is the camera right here, this one.
This is a selfie. Okay, that was.
One, two, three.
Good job.
Let's go eat, guys.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Thank you.